Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Board of Selectmen meeting for April 9th, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are past the hour of 7:00 PM. If I could have a motion for approval of minutes for March 26, 2018.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the minutes of March 26, 2018, regular meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor? Excellent. Okay. Thank you, Di from me.
The meeting minutes?
Thank you for the meeting minutes.
You're welcome.
Okay, reports.
Yes.
We have an interesting regular items here.
Yes, indeed. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, we received a nice note from Lorraine from the Fire Department. It was a letter of gratitude from the Chief Galvin in Berlin for firefighter paramedic Dylan Kessler. On April 1st, he was heading home to Berlin and thought he saw a bag on the side of the road, and when he got closer, it was a body. That, I guess, the person was on an ATV and hit a pole or a tree, and he gave a stop and gave assistance, and the chief said if it wasn't for him, the person could have died. So, great gratitude. It's a great, great story. It's, you know, how dedicated fire and police in Northborough are. So, it's a good, it's a nice story. So, please pass on from, I think, from the Board, our gratitude for him. Last Tuesday, I attended the Garden Club. We had a nice little chat. They wanted me to speak about things going on in Northborough and an activity that they could do. So, Scott came up with a great idea to plant around the 250th entering Northborough signs. So, they were very, very excited to hear that because they like new things to do and stuff, and it's new challenges. So, I'm sure there'll be contacting you. Have they already contacted you yet?
The phone's wrong, yeah.
Sorry about that. But, yeah, it was a great meeting, and it's a good group. So, they wanted me to join, so I sat through the meeting, and it was about an hour and a half, had a presentation and stuff, and it was nice. So, I enjoyed myself. And yesterday, at 1:00, I attended the 150th anniversary of the Northborough Library. Went in, and they had all kinds of activities from 150 years ago for the kids, and they had kids' activities, and they had some speakers, and it was nice, and stayed about 15 or 20 minutes. They wanted me to stay for the, till 3:00, but I said, "Oh, I have another, somewhere else to go." But, it was nice. So, that ends my report.
Thank you, Bill. Don?
Well, Bill and I met tonight as the interview committee, and we met with two candidates for the Cultural Council. So, first, I would move the Board vote to appoint Suzanne Cox to the Cultural Council for a three-year term.
Second.
Any discussion? All of us in favor?
And I would move the Board vote to appoint Craig Cox to the Cultural Council for a three-year term.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All of us in favor?
And speaking of the Cultural Council, last week, on Wednesday, they had the grantee reception. It's the first time they've held a public reception to hand out their awards and introduce people to the public, the people that receive grants. It was a very nice occasion. It was nice to hear the different people that received the awards talk about what it meant to receive the award and what they would be doing with it. It was a really nice first step for being a little more public for the Cultural Council. So, I'd like to congratulate them on a very nice evening. And I'd like to thank Fred Litchfield for addressing the water flow at 9:20 that I brought up at the last meeting. He's addressing it with the state, and it should be remedied in the overhaul when they redo the ramp system there. So, thank you, Fred. And lastly, the Fire Station Building Committee met last week, and we're going to start touring some of the other stations that have been recently built in the state, and it's a process that's moving along nicely. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Don. I'd like to reiterate what Bill was saying about Dylan Kessler. That is just very impressive. That is a big deal.
He was very quiet about it, but we all, you know, it's a very small knit family of fire service. We all knew about it, so we confronted him. He goes, "Yeah, I was like, was his last trip, he was just moving, he just bought a house in Worcester, him and his girlfriend, so they were just making their last trip back to Berlin to move everything out, and they came upon it."
I think that was one of those meant-to-be moments. The timing of that is just, that's just amazing.
Great story.
Yeah, it really is. So, congratulations, and please, again, like Bill said, pass along the thoughts from the Board. Wonderful. And thank you both for your monthly reports, Chief Library, Chief Grantee. Really, a lot of interesting things in there that I enjoy reading through. I'll have to read through more detail, but I just want to thank you very much for taking the time to put those together. Thank you very much. I have one question for Scott. As I'm driving around, I'm seeing a lot of, and I know you all are busy, so it's not a complaint by any means, but seeing a lot of branches that obviously were in somebody's yard, and then because of the ice, they hung over the road, and then they broke over the road. So, they're sitting on the side of the road. Now, is that a situation where the homeowner really needs to take care of that, or because it's on Route 20, for example, DPW eventually has to go and pick up that stuff? Because a lot of these things are barely off the road. You can tell that they were pushed off, you know, quickly so that cars wouldn't have an issue with them, but there are a few places like that I was wondering about.
Mass DOT will take care of Route 20 and West Main Street.
Okay.
That's their jurisdiction.
Okay.
Any of the branches or limbs or trees that were hanging over the road, either hanging or leaning, that we removed and felled and put on the side of the road, we're going to go back and process.
Okay.
So, there's been a two-step process. One, clear the roads from safety hazards, hangers and leaning trees, push them to the side, and now we come back with our processing crews and take care of that. Brush that's in people's yards that has fallen in their yards, backyard, side yards, that's private property, that's their responsibility. But if it fell into the road, and we cut it and we push it to the side, we're going back and we're processing that.
Okay, thank you. And how is the tree cutting going? Is it Asplund? Is that how you pronounce that?
No, they're, Asplund and Lewis Tree, Lewis is parked over by Casey Field, they're actually contracted with National Grid. Asplund is doing the primary circuit that runs through Northborough, National Grid. Lewis Tree is doing some of the smaller National Grid side circuits. We have Elliott Tree and our own services out on the street.
Oh, so that, they're affiliated with National Grid? I didn't realize that. Okay.
They're not touching any of the town leaning or hangers. We do work closely with National Grid. If there's a limb that's leaning or hanging over the lines, we call National Grid, they let their contractors know to come out and take care of it.
Okay, and they've been pretty good about that?
Yeah, very responsive.
They're receptive, okay.
Very responsive.
Okay, great. Thank you for all your work, to your department as well.
It's going to continue.
Yes. Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And that is my report. John?
No report.
Okay. Any public comments? No one hiding in here? Okay. New business. Presentation on the FY 2019 capital budget. John?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, as you know, at your last meeting, we had a presentation and a public hearing regarding the operating budget. As is tradition, this is your last meeting before we head into town meeting on April 23rd, and so tonight, I'm going to give you a very brief overview of the presentation that we'll do at town meeting with regard to the capital budget. So, I know you all know this, but folks at home and people who are just tuning into their local government process, I always want to make sure that I take the time to explain a couple of things. The difference between a capital improvement plan and a capital budget, the plan is a six-year plan, and when we talk about capital, we're talking about the physical assets of the town. Buildings, facilities, equipment, land, things of that nature, physical assets. Now, the capital budget is what we are going to town meeting with for this upcoming fiscal 2019 budget. So, in town meeting, there's a series of nine articles that are capital projects in nature that we're going to be taking up at town meeting. So, that's what we're going to do at town meeting. The capital plan, though, these projects don't fall out of the sky and just show up randomly or through some process in any one given year. I guess what I want to emphasize to folks is, any capital asset that we're going to acquire, a capital project we're going to do, has been typically in planning for six years. We have a six-year plan, and each year it moves up. The year that it's on deck, that's the capital budget. Those are the projects that we're going to town meeting with and seeking funding for approval. So, in this, in the case of fiscal 2019, those articles, warrant articles 15 through 23, those are our capital projects. We'll talk a little bit also, not only about the projects, but about the funding sources and tax impact, if any. I just covered this in terms of the six-year plan. So, this is our capital budget for fiscal 19. Right now, it totals about $1.87 million, and it's coming from a couple of different places. One is a general fund, and those are articles 15 through 20 and Article 23. That's about $1.36 million. And then we have projects that are being undertaken under the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds. So, enterprise funds are separate from the general services. These are typically util, these are utilities, they're a separate account. So, everything pertaining to water and sewer is funded in a special account that includes debt service, capital, and fees. Everything is maintained. It's essentially run as a business. So, this year, we've got two articles that are falling under the Water and Sewer Enterprise Funds, and they total $510,000. So, again, in total, we have about $1.87 million in projects going to town meeting on April So, this table here, which you have a copy of the presentation, it's also, this table in terms of these projects is also included in the town meeting warrant booklet that folks will have, and this shows all of the projects that are coming forward. I'm going to go through these very briefly in a moment, but it lists them out by various functional areas: police, MIS, GIS, DPW, Highway Division, the enterprise funds, and then, last but not least, we have a project coming forward for the K-28 school department. In terms of the funding, this is something that I like to talk about every year and spend a little bit of time on, making sure people understand. Years ago, prior to fiscal 2012, almost every capital project that the town undertook, from a simple piece of equipment replacement or pickup truck on up, was funded with debt. So, in other words, we would issue, we'd issue debt, and we'd incur finance charges to pay for those things. Beginning in FY 12, with the adoption of the free cash policy, which this Board was very much involved in, we now have a dedicated funding source to pay for these smaller capital projects so that we don't issue debt. And right now, the entire general fund projects being proposed at town meeting, the $1.36 million, were being funded with free cash, so remaining free cash from the close of fiscal 2017. So, that means all those projects can be approved by the voters at town meeting, and there'll be no additional tax impact at all. So, again, there's not, this isn't magic. If you go back prior to fiscal 2012, if we finished out the prior year and we had budget surplus left over, we used to take it and roll it in to the next year's budget, and that essentially creates a structural deficit. And when the economy went south on us, and we had difficulties with revenues, and the state cut back on their aid to localities in the middle of the fiscal year, we had, we basically had ourselves an issue. We had a structural deficit that was realized. So, we decided we're never going to put ourselves in that situation again. So, basically, now, we're able to fund, using free cash, most of these capital needs. And we don't just fund the small stuff. We funded significant projects. We put roofs on Lincoln Street, we put a roof on Procter, put a roof on Peaslee, we bought a new fire engine, we buy DPW equipment, we buy police cruisers, we put roofs on the police department. We're able to do routine capital investments in our equipment and our facilities without any additional tax impact and without incurring any finance charges. What I always like to say is, this is a lot like you and your personal finances. If the washer or dryer fails on you, rather than put it on the credit card where you're going to get charged interest, if you can, if you can afford to, you pay cash for those smaller things, and you save the financing for the larger projects like a house or maybe a car. In the case of Northborough, we are no longer charging things on the credit card. We're paying cash for the routine equipment replacements that we normally need to make, and what that does is, over time, if you stop charging the credit card, you pay it off. What does that mean? Well, it means your operating costs, your monthly bills will go down as you pay off that debt. That's been the case for Northborough, and right now, our debt service is about 4.4% of our operating budget. Our policy is to keep debt between 5 and 10% of the operating budget. That's what the bond rating agencies like to see. And the reason why they do like to see some debt is because generally, you can't pay cash for everything, and if you're incurring no debt at all, it might signal that you aren't making any investments in your buildings or in your equipment or your roads. So, just like, again, in your personal life, very few people can pay cash for a home or for vehicles, so they finance those things. On the grander scale for a municipality with almost a $70 million operating budget, we pay cash for $200,000 pieces of equipment. In terms of the water and sewer projects that are $510,000, those would be funded out of essentially free cash or available funds in the enterprise, out of the enterprise budgets. So, neither of those projects that are coming forward, one is an excavator and the other is water main replacements, neither of those are going to be funded with debt. So, again, through the fund balance in the sewer and water enterprise funds, those projects are going to get paid for, so no additional fee impact for the residents. We're sort of in a unique spot. We don't have, if we had a significant building project, like Lincoln Street, or the library, the senior center, or in the future, the fire station, those will need to be financed with debt, appropriately so. And there's some equity issues with why you'd want to do that. You'd want to spread the costs out over the people who are going to see the benefit of those facilities because the useful life is 20 years. So, the people today shouldn't pay for an asset that has a 20-year life, so you finance that over the period of time. But, given the fact that all we have going forward to town meeting this year are equipment and facility projects, I'm pleased to say that 100% of that, of the capital budget in those nine articles that are going before town meeting, are funded with no additional tax impact. And I think that has been very well received by town meeting over the years. They understand that this is routine replacement, and the fact that we're managing ourselves, we're not inflating our operating budgets and then coming back and asking for the taxpayers to pay debt service with finance charges, the fact that we're able to pay for this stuff as we go shows that we are very, very, very much managing ourselves within our, within our means and doing it in a way that is, in the long-term, best interest of the taxpayer. So, again, the funding sources, this entire pie chart is from operating revenues, 1.36 in free cash and $510,000 in free cash from the enterprise funds. One of the things, this is a preview of the presentation that we're going to be bringing forward to town meeting on the 23rd. The point that I always want people to understand is that the fact that we're not adding debt doesn't mean that we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. We're continuing to invest in our equipment, in our infrastructure. There's $300,000 in additional funds for our roadways, and we're continuing to invest in our buildings. We're putting boilers and roofs on our, on our, on our facilities. We're not, we're not playing any games, there's no gimmicks. This is good, solid financial management, just like, again, in your personal lives. You should be maintaining your furnace, you should be giving, doing tune-ups on your vehicles, you should be paying cash for, you know, dishwashers and things of that nature, and you shouldn't be financing and charging things on a credit card unless you absolutely have to. We've managed ourselves well so that we're not really charging on that credit card. The only debt that the town of Northborough has issued since fiscal 2012 have been for major infrastructure projects or major facilities projects, like the Lincoln Street School, which was a $25.5 million project, $10 million of which was a grant from the state. So, we're taking out debt for major capital stuff, and we've paid cash for every other piece of equipment and even some significant building projects. I take that back, the one thing we did issue some debt for was the covert replacement on Church Street. It was a $2 million project. We paid cash for half of it, and we financed the other, the other million dollars of it. That was the only debt that we've added for the general fund. And again, that project arguably could have been financed entirely with debt. It's got a 20-plus-year useful life, but again, we're paying cash for things that most communities would have to bond for because they don't have the funds and they, and again, if you're spending, if you're spending your free cash on operating expenses so that you don't have it available to make routine equipment investments, then you're financing debt, you're adding to the operational costs, you're adding to the impacts on the taxpayers. That's exactly what we are doing in Northborough. Since fiscal 12, we have invested over $14 million in pay-as-you-go capital with no additional general fund tax impact. That is absolutely amazing. That could be $14 million of debt service that we would have to be paying finance charges on right now. In addition to that, that would be $14 million that, instead of paying for one-time capital, we would have rolled into our operating budgets. Our operating budgets would be $14 million, potentially higher. So, this is about fiscal constraint, and it's about, it's about long-range sustainability, which we talk about constantly. So, we've had 10.5 million in free cash, 3.5 million in other funding sources. That could be cable revenues, it could be some community preservation funds. It does not include, I mentioned a moment ago, the $10 million grant for the Lincoln Street building project. That's not included in these numbers. So, that doesn't include grant funding. That's very impressive. That shows amazing discipline. The fiscal 19 capital budget has already been reviewed. As you know, the Financial Planning Committee is the committee charged with putting this together. They oversee the six-year capital plan, and they decide, in conjunction with my office, what projects will come forward for funding, and I'm pleased to stand here tonight and say, both the Financial Planning Committee, as well as the Appropriations Committee, is unanimously in support of all of these projects. Now, I'm not going to go into too much detail, but I just want to flip through these quickly. We have nine projects coming to town meeting. One is a routine cruiser replacement, so we're repurchasing two new vehicles. Our cruisers are on a four-year, 100,000-mile replacement schedule, and this is something where we're cycling constantly through. It makes, it's more cost-effective because we are dealing with significant repair costs. We also make sure that we have reliable vehicles so that when you call the police department in an emergency, they're going to be able to get there. They're not driving, you know, 20-year-old vehicles that are breaking down. These are public safety vehicles, they have to be reliable. But we're on a very good replacement schedule of, again, every four years or 100,000 miles for the front-line patrol vehicles. This year, we'll replace two. In 2008 was our last flyover in the town. It's time to do that again, so we'll be flying the whole town. This is the photography that's needed to capture the physical changes to the town's infrastructure and buildings, and this gets married to our geographic information system, so our tax, our tax camera system with our, with our tax properties and roadways, wetlands, things of that nature. So, we haven't done anything in 10 years. Just to remind folks, there was no Wegmans, there was no mall last time we did this flyover. So, we've changed significantly, and we need to make sure that our maps and our, and our GIS system is updated accordingly. So, typically, you update and do a flyover about every 10 years. One of the things we're looking at is, one of the neighboring communities is due for their flyover as well, so we're trying to pair up with them, see if we can get some economies of scale, save a little bit of money off of the proposed project. But as of right now, the budget is significant to carry us on our own. Then we move into DPW. This year, we're replacing a one-ton dump truck. One of the things we're adding is a hot box. This allows DPW to be able to do hot asphalt patches for potholes and repairs. It's a world of difference between putting cold patch in a cold hole in the middle of the winter versus being able to put hot asphalt. Plus, if you go and acquire that hot asphalt and you're doing road repairs, you have a very limited amount of time before you can make those repairs, before you've got a big, giant lump of black hardened stuff in the back of your truck. So, this is a routine replacement of a one-ton dump truck. The only difference is, this year, we're going to be adding that hot box in to enhance our ability to make, make more effective pothole repairs. We have a routine replacement of a 2007 street sweeper. They last about 10 years. This one is just due. Again, this is not, these aren't new acquisitions, these are regular replacements. If you own the construction company and you ran a business like we do with DPW, you would have to replace your vehicles and your equipment on a regular basis, and things have a normal, expected useful life. And we get the full life out of this equipment, but it comes time and it has to be replaced. Another replacement is a 2006 Skid steer. Again, it's reached the end of its useful life. This piece of equipment has got multiple attachments. It's used for road cutting, has forklifts on it, mill the asphalt with it. It also has a broom attachment. It's an all-purpose piece of equipment. Again, this is a routine replacement. Now, I mentioned a few moments ago that we are making regular, routine investments in our infrastructure. Article 20, and I know the Board is well aware of this, but Article 20 is the appropriation through the capital budget that gets us to the 1.1 million in roadway investment that we need to do. So, we do it through a combination. We get about a half a million dollars in Chapter 90 transportation funds from the state. In most communities, that's the only money that gets invested in roadways. But we have $300,000 in the operating budget of the DPW, and then in addition, through Article 20, we're using $300,000 in free cash to get to the magic amount of 1.1 million dollars. This is a chart from our pavement management plan. The bottom red line is what our roadways would look like in the next 10 years if we did not make a minimum investment of 1.1 million dollars. And essentially, our roads are, right now, our overall rating is a 73, our pavement condition index, PCI, is a 73. Just like in school, you know, it's about a C, you know, 100 is perfect, and anything below a 70, you're starting to look at getting into D and failure. So, if we only invested a half million dollars of Chapter 70, Chapter 90 funds that we get from the state, in 10 years, our roads would be failing. And once a road fails, you can maintain a road in good condition for about a dollar, and once it fails, it costs you $10 to $22 to maintain the same, the same square footage of roadway. So, we mapped out several years ago, and I think it's three years ago, we mapped out that this green center line, that's the minimum we need to be able to make sure that we are on at least an upward trajectory in terms of our roadway maintenance. $1.1 million, over 10 years, our, our average pavement condition index goes from a 73 to a 77. I always joke, you know, where do we really want to be? Obviously, I mean, we'd love to be on that blue line, and in 10 years, have an overall PCI of 87. That would require $2 million a year. We don't have $2 million a year to invest. But just to put it in perspective, when it comes to looking at what, where do you want to be, Disney, I think anybody who's ever been to Disney would say that that is a very well-made facility, maintained facility. Their goal is to maintain any of, all of their hard pavement structures at an 85 or better. So, that's pretty much ideal. Our goal over the years is, if we can invest a little more, we've lobbied very heavily our legislative delegation to increase the Chapter 90 funding that come to municipalities. I just sent you out this week an article that appeared in the Mass Municipal Association's Beacon. The executive director spent his entire transmittal letter in that issue, talking about the need to increase Chapter 90 funds because one of the biggest issues we face in Massachusetts, in New England, and across the country is not investing enough in our aging infrastructure. I'd say right now, Northborough is right on the curb, we're doing okay, as long as we stay the course. If the state would increase their Chapter 70, I'm sorry, their Chapter 90 funds statewide from 200 to 300 million, we'd get about another quarter of a million dollars. We would be between the green line and the blue line, which would be a pretty good trajectory for us to be on. So, we keep lobbying for that. Which would be a pretty good trajectory for us to be on. So we keep lobbying for that. It was the number one legislative priority when we brought our delegation in at your March twenty-sixth meeting. It will continue to be a major priority for us, but, um, I can't stress enough the importance of, of passing article twenty. Because if we don't keep this patch together, no pun intended, while we wait for the state to step up and do what they ought to do. Um, we cannot afford to be between the green line and the red line. You know, we need to be here or above. And the good news is, right now, that's where we are. And, uh, that's where we're projecting to be over the next several years. Um, in terms of water and sewer enterprise funds, we have two projects. One is, uh, the acquisition of an excavator. Uh, this is used to do any of the roadway repairs. It's a medium-sized machine. This would allow them to be able to do work in the roadway without having to block the entire roadway. Um, but this is, uh, gate valve repairs, hydrant replacements, excavations for service lines and things of that nature. Um, this project, uh, the cost is being shared between the water and the sewer enterprise funds out of their free cash. This, um, article twenty-two, water main, uh, repairs and replacements. Uh, this year, we're looking to replace the old water main lines on Park Street and Wind Street in conjunction with some other pavement enhancements. The last thing you want to do is go in and repave a roadway if you've got aged infrastructure under the ground that's going to leak or break. And before you get the useful benefit out of that, um, out of that roadway, you're cutting it open to fix it. So since we're going to be in that neighborhood to do some roadway repairs, um, we're going to be making, um, some water main, uh, repairs and replacements. Going to replace some old lines in that neighborhood. The last project we have, uh, going to town meeting is article twenty-three. This is the Z School Boiler Replacement. It's a nineteen ninety-nine boiler. And, um, this was in the capital plan. So what we do, as I said, is the capital plan is six years out. This was in the plan for two years out. And we got a request from the superintendent if we could move this particular project up. Because they were experiencing some significant issues with this boiler. A couple of things. One, this boiler was a, not the best model. Uh, any school that put this boiler model that we have in right now has experienced the same problems. Uh, the manufacturer isn't supporting it anymore. Uh, we've been able to keep it going because a couple, a couple of, uh, communities have actually replaced this boiler. And we've sent our maintenance crews over there to scavenge parts off of it. And that's how we've been able to keep this one going. So, again, it's been in the plan. Uh, it was supposed to be out a couple of years, but, um, the last thing you want to do is have, be doing a boiler replacement. In the middle of winter with a school full of children. That's not a good, uh, place to be. So they ask, can we, can we move this up a little bit? And that's the beauty of the plan is it's six years out. But you have some flexibility to move a couple of projects around. So this one moved up. And, um, on a positive note, uh, once it's replaced, they're looking at energy efficiencies of between thirty-five and forty percent over this old boiler. And that means saving, uh, upwards of approximately twenty-two thousand dollars a year in fuel costs. So there is a, there's a sixteen-year payback on this just from the fuel expenses alone, never mind the repair costs. And, and again, you don't, you cannot have an interruption of services. So, um, I was at an event on, uh, Friday night. And the, uh, a school committee member approached me and just wanted to thank, uh, us collectively for always being sensitive to the school's needs. And their request to move this project up. They just feel like the partnership and the cooperation there is terrific. And, um, again, this was a priority of the superintendent's. The Financial Planning Committee agreed, so this project is moving forward. Those are the projects coming forward to town meeting. Um, I'm certainly can answer any questions. On, on a positive note, there's no additional tax impact. These are all routine replacements and investments in our infrastructure, in our equipment and our facilities. It means we're taking care of the things that we've often taken care of. We're not delaying stuff or postponing it. I say this every year, um, when we go to town meeting with our budget, our budget is gimmick-free. We aren't financing things with debt. We're not financing operating expenses with debt. We're not kicking things off from one fiscal year to another. We're not using one-time revenues to backfill and maintain a level of services that we really can't afford. Uh, and we're not balancing our annual operating budget by deferring investment in equipment and infrastructure and facilities. It's just like, it's not a good plan in your personal lives to go out to dinner three times a week. By not changing the oil in your car, not maintaining your furnace, not painting the outside of your house by deferring maintenance. We don't do that in Northborough. So our budget and our capital is a solid foundation. It's, it's best practices in not only our operating budget, but also our capital. So, uh, with that, I certainly can answer any questions that the board may have.
John, thank you very much. Um, thank you for the presentation. And also, thank you very much for the process that I know you go through every year. To get to this point with the capital projects. I know you work with the department heads and, and, uh, you know, and establishing what really should come, come forward. It's like you said earlier, it's not a, you know, willy-nilly kind of thing where you just pluck a few things here and there. Oh, that sounds great. Let's go with that. So I know that people do very much appreciate that, as well as the transparency with all this information. Everybody hears everything and everybody sees everything. They go to town meeting, they feel like they're getting all the information, not just part of it. So I just want to thank you very, very much for that. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, what is the rationale typically, this is just a general question, of, of a six-year plan? Capital plan versus, let's say, five-year or seven-year? Is there a financial kind of a reason to have a six-year?
Yeah, well, it's, most, uh, capital improvement plans are, are five-year capital improvement. That's a, that's a typical horizon. Most equipment is, uh, replaced on a, on a five to a ten-year schedule, like, uh, you would, you would see that as a, as a normal, um, replacement schedule. It's funny because we actually have a thirty-year or a twenty-year plan. You know, when we start talking about, uh, DPW ten-wheel dump trucks, they have a twenty-year useful life. But I'm talking about a fire engine. You're talking about twenty, twenty-five-year useful life. So internally, as staff, the plan goes on and on and on. And we're watching all those things. And we're watching roofs and things like that, that maybe have a twenty or twenty-five year. But in terms of, from a practical standpoint of what we present out and we start to really look at in, in any depth. Uh, five years plus the capital budget. So we have the, the year of what we're financing and then looking out five years. That's reasonable. And I, and I should point out, in our capital improvement plan, there is a project detail sheet and a photograph and details. On every project that we are contemplating in the next five to six years. Um, so that's what we, we do. If I know a roof or a piece of equipment, you know, has got a twenty-year useful life. There's no reason, we track it and we're aware of it, but, you know, I don't, the book would be, you know, six inches thick if you, if you did it in this kind of detail. So as the projects move up, um, each year, you know, projects can get in, out on year six. With, you know, reasonable detail. And each year, the Financial Planning Committee reviews all the projects. And each year, that detail gets a little bit more in-depth. Uh, we have time to look for grant funding. We have time to look for alternative funding sources. We also have time to look at, do we even need to do the project? You know, should we, should, is this a piece of equipment that we even need to replace? You know, maybe technology has made things, uh, available. Let me, this is relevant, uh, at this point. Um, but if you go look around the state and around the country, most municipalities are looking at about a five or a six-year capital improvement plan. We all look out beyond that. You know, again, I'll go back to your own personal lives, okay? Your cars. What are your most, most of the stuff that you're looking at that need replacement? You're thinking about refrigerators and washers, heaters, vehicles and things of that nature. If you're really good, you know how old your roof is and that in ten years, that's going to need replacement. Or your, how old is your septic system? When does that come online? So that's kind of the equivalent. But from a, from an annual budget process, five years is, is industry standard to be looking at. It's probably a longer answer than what you were, you were looking for.
Throw that out there.
We look at everything.
Yes. Yeah, I think that's great. Questions from the board. Bill?
You know what? This is great, John, because when you go to town meeting, uh, you know, people know that there's a picture of it and an explanation, you know what I mean? So it's more, it's more visible to the people, you know, rather than saying, you know, what is this and why are we doing it? And this is our plan, you know, every four years, like for a cruiser, that's a hundred thousand miles or four years. And it's really, it was telling when you talked about Park and, and Wind Street. You got to do the infrastructure first, you know, the water mains and everything before you pave. Because, I mean, you see a lot of communities, they'll pave and then the next year you go through and they're digging the street up again and replacing a water main or a gas line or something like that. I mean, that's forethought, you know what I mean? That's planning and that's, that's what we do, you know what I mean? It's forethought. You know, you're doing all of this infrastructure first and then you're going to do the paving. So I just wanted to bring you that, that, kind of like a tall tale sign of how we do things. You know, with good forethought and.
And I think when you, to go back to Leslie's point about why the, what's the magic of the five or six years? Well, that's a reasonable timeframe for us to be working within. So like the fire department, for instance, um, you know, has a plan, uh, or a project out in a couple of years. To replace all of their, uh, breathing packs. Well.
Get the grant this year.
So that is in our five-year plan. Well, once it shows up in the plan, we start saying, well, where are some alternative funding sources for that? And so as it makes its way from about five years up to the capital budget for the year that we're going to town meeting. We're currently seeking and applying actively for grant funding. And if we get the grant funding, guess what? That project falls off and something else moves up. But it gives you time to study things. It gives you time to look at alternatives. Um, you don't want to decide tomorrow that you need to replace a boiler in a fifty-five thousand square foot school. What are we going to replace it with? How, what do we have for abatement costs? What are the design cost? You know, we've talked about that for five years up until where we get. You know, ready for town meeting, we're going to seek funding. And by the way, even that project, we are still actively trying to get the Massachusetts School Building Authority to give us a grant for that. So you'll see in the motion for that project that we're actually, uh, the motion will say, and allow the town to pursue a grant. I'll go back a couple of years when we did the Lincoln Street Roof. Do you remember that presentation at town meeting? Town meeting approved the financing, uh, the, the funds to fix that roof with the contingency that we can still pursue grants. We ultimately received a grant, uh, from the state that paid for almost half of that roof. So again, by looking out that five years, that's time where you can start to, you know, maybe try to get some earmarked funding through the state legislature. Um, pursue grants, find alternative funding sources, seek donations, you know, so that by time you get that project moving up for five years, you've. This is what, this is what, if somebody were to just come and watch one of the Financial Planning Committee meetings to talk about replacement of a truck. And they say, boy, they, you know, they didn't really discuss that for very long. They've talked about that truck for five to six years. They're comfortable with this investment at this point. Because when it first appears, when something new appears in that six-year plan, they want to talk about that. Why is it in the plan? Why is it out six years? What, what can we get for funding? Do we have to have it? Is it a replacement? Is it a new acquisition? Is there some other place that we can get the money for this? And so you study it for five years. And, and again, it makes for, uh, a very efficient and effective process. When you come forward to town meeting, if you read through the plan, there shouldn't be a surprise to you what the capital budget going to town meeting next year looks like. It might move around a couple of things, like this year, that, that boiler for the, for the, um, for the, uh, for the school moved up, uh, a year ahead. Well, because they're experiencing more operational issues with it, so we moved it up. So we have that flexibility. Uh, it's very effective. I will tell you, um, of all the things that, you know, we, we train other communities on. Um, capital planning is, is one of them, but our specific capital plan and the format, people love it. And I always, when I'm doing these training sessions across the state, I always use the fire department as an example in DPW. I say, who here could tell me the difference between an engine, a pumper, and a rescue? What's the difference between a loader, a backhoe, and a skid steer? There's always some volunteer fire, fire guy in the audience goes, I know the answer, I know the answer. But outside of that one individual, most people don't know. But you want to know what a skid steer is, or what a, what a excavator is, you know, that's what we're buying. That's what we're buying, folks. And, um, you know, it helps.
It does. That's why I said that. I mean, if people know or they see the picture of it, oh, that's, that's a skid.
And there is a photograph of every project that we're going to do from every department for, for all six years in that, in that book. And you see the picture, you have the explanation of why we need it. If it's a new acquisition or a replacement, what the, what the, uh, in the case of the boiler. What do we think will save in terms of energy efficiencies? What are they going to be, the impacts on the operating budget? So it's all laid out. It's a very good process. And I'll tell you, um, I'll knock on wood, um, I think this is the tenth year, consecutive year. I hope to go, where we go to town meeting with unanimous support for every budget and every capital project. And I can't stress enough to people at home that are watching this, this is not apathy. Okay? This is excellent financial planning. That's why, when everybody's on the same page and nobody's fighting, it doesn't mean that nobody cares and nobody's paying attention. It's just the opposite. They're paying full attention and they understand, and everybody's on the same page. And the rules of engagement are clear about what we spend our money on and what we don't spend our money on and how we do that. And that means we go to town meeting and have a smooth process, hopefully.
Thoroughly vetted.
And we can spend more time talking about recreational marijuana.
That's right. There we go. Thank, I really appreciate that explanation. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a couple of quick questions. Um, one, do we get any trade-in value in any of the equipment, um, when we buy new things? What happens with those items and do we get some money back in?
Yeah, that's a great question. All project costs that you see in the capital budget are net of trade-in.
Oh, they're net? Okay, okay.
One of the things that I'm sort of a stickler for with the departments is, um, we don't just keep acquiring new stuff and hang on to the junky old stuff. If it needs to be replaced, get rid of it. So we, we trade everything in.
Okay.
So, so in some cases, on some of the DPW equipment, you might get ten or fifteen thousand dollars to trade in, uh, a backhoe or something, or a loader, or something significant. Um, but by the time the police are done beating the daylights out of their cruisers, um.
We got five thousand dollars.
We, 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 we get a, we get a few bucks for them. Um, but again, there's a reason why we have that four-years or a hundred thousand mile mark. It's because that's when all the warranties are expired. And so if a transmission goes, we own it. So if you look in the police operating budget, their maintenance budget for their cruisers has gone down and down to now it's a sustainable amount. Because we're cycling and we're replacing them at regular interviews, intervals. Uh, when I started here, DPW was in such a hole with their equipment. We had, we had a hundred and thirty pieces of rolling stock and half of it didn't roll. And, um, we were cannibalizing on stuff and we had, you know, we had safety issues. Um, I'm happy to say at this point, you know, we've replaced, we're on, at this point, we are at, just on routine replacements. Um, every ten years, ten to twelve years, we'll replace the one-ton dump trucks. You know, every twenty years, we're replacing the larger, um, ten-wheel dump trucks. And so each year, you'll see, you know, one or two of these pieces of equipment in the plan for the next six years. And that's just regular routine replacement. Now, if something terrible happened, if, if something really, um, unplanned happened in terms of the operating budget. World economy implodes, is a terrible disaster, whatever the case may be, you know, you can postpone, if your fleet and your equipment is in good shape. You know, you could postpone these for a couple of years and then you'll have to play catch-up. But, you know, if you're riding it to the edge where your vehicles aren't in good shape and then, and then you get stuck where you don't have the funds to replace them. They just don't work anymore. Now, now you're in trouble. So, again, just like your house, if you're smart, like I have two, I have two vehicles, my car and my wife's car, right? One's newer than the other. And so you cycle them out and, you know, you're buying one new vehicle every, you know, few years. So that you don't have two vehicles that you need to replace at the exact same time. You know, it's that type of planning, just on a larger, uh, fleet basis for very significant departments, police, fire, DPW. Very heavy equipment needs in those departments. And I'll tell you right now, standing here, those departments are in excellent shape. Their equipment is safe. It's safe for the employees and it's safe for the public. And we just keep on that routine replacement. And the beauty of it is, we're, we're living within our means. We're not, we're not issuing debt to replace this equipment. You know, we're using budget surplus and we're doing this on a regular basis. It's a good place to be.
Excellent. No, it's great. And I think mentioning net is not a bad thing either when we're talking at town meeting. Uh, I know that question about trading has come up at a couple town meetings, questions from the residents. So just saying that from the get-go, that that's a net figure.
Sure.
Kind of just.
And again, I make a statement, all, all equipment, all equipment purchases, they're all replacements and it's all net of trade-in. We don't hang on to the vehicles. And we don't get into the aftermarket of trying to sell these in personal transactions where we're then liable for. By the time we're ready to trade in a piece of equipment, it usually means it, it's, it's, it has, it has significant issues or needs. it usually means it's, it has, it has significant issues or needs. And so we want to trade it into a dealer. Just like if you're getting rid of your own vehicle and it, and it needs a lot of work or has safety issues, you don't want to sell it in a private transaction. You send it to the dealer, it usually winds up going to a scrapyard or, or something like that. But then they're responsible for it.
Right, I appreciate that. And one more question?
Yeah.
Pavement management plan, one of my favorite things. Does that, so that includes all, is it 93 miles of roadway in North Borough? Less routes 135 and 20, which are state roads?
Eighty-three miles of roadway excluding 20 and 290 and West Main Street.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, we try to touch about 10%, of our roads every year. That's our goal.
Wow.
Yep.
That's a great plan. Thank you very much for that. That's, that's a super thing.
Again, a good place to be. We know that if we just stay the course, if we just stay the course right now, 10 years from now, we'll be better off. We won't be worse off. You know, a lot of communities, if you tell them, "If you stay the course where you are today, where are you going to be in 10 years?" They'll be on that red line, down. And once you lose a roadway, like I said, it's, it's exponentially more expensive to rebuild a roadway than to maintain what you have. It's just like, again, your personal life. If you've got to replace your roof, replace it before it leaks and destroys the drywall and creates mold. You know, if you stay on top of this stuff, you're always better off.
You're always looking at me, John.
Well, you know, I'm not looking at you.
It's my book, it's my story.
Because, because, Bill, you and I have many conversations about equipment procurement-
Right.
-in your private business and the need to maintain equipment and to replace it and to make sure that you're, you're, you're spreading the useful life over the time that you have to pay for it. So you do on a, in a private sector, on a smaller scale, what we do in the public sector on a larger scale. But I know you have an appreciation for that sort of, you know, maintaining equipment is not easy, you know? Just like maintaining a home, you know, it, you really have to pay attention. Or, you know, if you just kind of, hey, I'm saving lots of money because I'm, I'm not fixing or maintaining anything in my house, that's great for three to five years. Then all of a sudden, you have, your furnace blows up and your roof leaks and, you know, that doesn't save you money. Deferring capital investment in your infrastructure and your equipment does not save you money in the long run, and I think we all know that. And I'll go back to the article by Jeff Beckwith at the MMA. His point was, by trying to convince the state to release more Chapter 90 funds for infrastructure, he's basically saying, it's an unfunded liability and it grows exponentially every year that you don't meet the minimum investment that you need to. You're not saving money by not appropriating more money to take care of this investment. You're, you're driving the price up down the road, down the road, down the, down the, down the road, to the point where all of a sudden, then you're going to have to divert even more funds to fix something that's going to cost you four or five times as much than if you bit the bullet a little earlier and funded it on a regular recurring cycle. Like, like Scott just said to you, or DPW Director just said, we try to touch 10% to 20% of our roads every year. If we're doing that on a regular basis, then every five or six-year cycle, we're getting to at least the minimum maintenance of crack ceiling so that the roads don't fail. Once they fail, that's it. The, the, the cost to tear up a road and rebuild it is, is unbelievably expensive.
Great, thank you very much for the explanation.
Great.
Thank you, I appreciate it, John. Thank you very much. Excellent. Okay. Next on the agenda is reappointments to boards, committees and commissions. Okay.
I have that.
We have the reappointment list. And the first thing I want to say is thank you to everybody who decided they wanted to reup. We need good volunteers and it's great to have people who have been in some of these positions for a while who have institutional memory, if there aren't minutes, for example. And I think it's, I think it's very commendable. I see a lot of wonderful people on this list. So we need to proceed with that. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to reappoint those individuals who appear on the 2018 reappointment list to the corresponding boards, committees and commissions.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much and thank you again to all our volunteers. Assignment of Town Meeting Warrant Articles. I know that Jason previously expressed interest in four of the articles, leaving us 18 for four of us. I know Jeff isn't here this evening, so we need to assign some to him. That would mean that we each have four. And a couple of us would have five to cover them all, so...
Do you want to go one at a time or do you want to just?
Um, what's the best way, do you think, to do this? Diane, I know that you always do all the record-keeping for this. Is there a way that you prefer?
Yes.
What do you think?
In your packet is a, is a summary sheet that we use at town meeting. And the motion by column are, and, and just for the record, it is the Board of Selectmen's warrant. So you can make motions, recommendations on anything that you want. What we have provided for you in your packet are the ones that, over the years, you traditionally would make motions on. So we've highlighted those for you tonight. So my recommendation would be for you to go down these and just determine who want, who, from the board, you'd like to make the motions for those articles. And then you also have several, let's see, three, seven articles that we would ask, again, you can make recommendations on anything that you choose to as a board. But traditionally, you make recommendations on the key budgets. So there's seven articles then that the board, I would hope, would vote this evening to recommend.
Okay. Okay, we could go down in order. I could ask Bill, do you-
I mean, I have a little marks next to mine, but if you want to go one by one, that's fine, too.
Okay, let's do that, let's do that. Okay, Article number one, point, deputy moderator.
I'd like to do that if possible.
Okay. So that'd be Dawn. Okay, two, compensating balance agreement. Anybody have a, I'll do it if you want. Okay, prior yours, Bill's?
Give it to Jeff.
Jeff, okay. He's going to get a wee. That's what he gets.
We always do that, Tim.
Exactly.
He's always gone.
That's right, he is.
He's always really gone.
He is. Okay. Article five, water, sewer and solid waste enterprise funds.
I'll take that.
Okay, so Bill. Okay, next is Article 10, Authorization to Board of Selectmen for Grant Applications. I'll grab that if you want. Okay, revolving funds by law and authorization of expenditure limits, number 11. Jeff?
Sure.
Okay. Appropriations Committee Reserve Fund, number 12.
I'd like to do that.
Okay. Dawn? 13, stabilization fund. Did you say 13?
Yes.
Bill, okay. Okay. 16, CIP, MIS, GIS. Did I miss one?
Fifteen.
Oh, sorry, okay, police cruiser replacement.
I'll do that if-
Okay. Okay, aerial photography and mapping. I'll grab that one if you want. Unless, do you want to?
Nope.
Okay.
Which one's Jason want? Do we have Jason's?
Yeah, he's in green.
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
So his already, he's already set.
Sorry.
Okay, street sweeper replacement. I love those, I'd be happy to do that. Those are great.
Exciting one.
I'll do the skid steer if you want.
Okay. All right.
I love skid steers.
Road improvements.
I really do.
Kind of cute little thing. Road improvements and maintenance. Okay. Twenty-one is water and sewer excavator. Jeff? Water mains repair and replacement?
I'll do that if you would like.
Bill, okay. Okay, so-
We have a running tally so far.
Yeah, do you know what the tally is yet or? Bill?
Dawn has three.
Four.
Bill has four already?
I think so, yeah.
Bill has five.
Bill has five.
Okay, we have five.
I have four for Bill.
Dawn?
I have four.
Two, three, four. Dawn has four. I have four, okay.
So we all have four so far.
Jeff has three.
Jeff has three. Got to give him another one then.
Another one, okay. We will do personnel by law, Jeff, number 24. Okay, and then two of us could have five. So whatever you are comfortable doing.
I'll do the finance if you want, except you.
Okay, and then the other one is street acceptance, certainly in court.
I'm fine with that.
Want to do it? Okay. All right, does that sound?
Yep.
We're good, Jeff has, he has four. I have four, okay. Jason has four and then Dawn and Bill have five each. That's everything, okay. Great, next item is to vote on town meeting article recommendations, warrant recommendations. So we have seven potential ones that we could vote on. So the first one would be the town budget.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article Four Town Budget at Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Great, okay. The next one we could vote on is the water sewer and solid waste enterprise funds.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article Five Water, Sewer and Solid Waste Enterprise Funds at Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Okay. Next one is North Rockadee School Budget.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article Six North Rockadee School Budget at Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Okay, next one is 25. Finance Department Reorganization.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article 25 Finance Department Reorganization at Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Madam Chair, if I may explain the next two. So historically, the board relies on Appropriations Committee and Financial Planning Committee to review and recommend approval of the Community Preservation Fund projects. But you specifically made a point of endorsing the Town Common Project in the last, in the last couple cycles. So I've added it here and there's two articles pertaining to the Town Common Project. Article 30 is acceptance of the 20 Rear Gale parcel. This is the parcel that's being donated. It will be under the article to be donated and it's up to the Board of Selectmen to accept it and execute the documents that perfect the town's acquisition of that property. So since you're the ones who will be in charge of that, you should probably recommend that you are willing to accept it. Then the, the partner to that is Article 31, which is the Community Preservation Fund Phase Three. This is additional funding to allow that 20 Rear Gale donated parcel to be incorporated into the Town Common Project. So that's why we've added those two. But again, you can make recommendations on anything you want, but we specifically pulled these two out because one requires your action after town meeting to perfect the acquisition and the other is related to that acquisition.
Yes, okay.
If that makes sense.
That does make sense.
Absolutely.
With that in mind, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article 30 Town Common, acceptance of 20 Rear Gale Street Parcel Domination at Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Okay. Do I hear a motion for the Article 31?
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article 31 Community Preservation Fund, Town Common Phase Three at Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Okay, and the last one potentially, unless anyone else has other ideas, is Article 36, Prohibition of Marijuana Establishments.
Madam Chair, I move the board vote to recommend approval of Article 36 General Bylaw, Prohibition of Marijuana Establishments at Town Meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All is in favor? Great.
Excellent.
Perfect. Does anyone else have any thoughts about anything else we ought to recommend or?
We don't recommend the debt to the White Cliffs. Is that something that, no? You don't have to. I mean, honestly, it's, town meeting is already, the board went on record in terms of that project. Once you decided to buy it, you have to make the debt service payment. You certainly can make, you can make the recommendation.
No, I just, that's the only thing that I had a question on.
Just historically, the board has not taken up each and every community preservation article, so.